June?
Yep. June 5th.
Camera's coming down.
Okay, I'm gonna...
At our June meeting. It's a better way.
Susan, are you ready?
Sorry, I'm just conferring.
We're gonna call the Simsbury Board of Education Regular Meeting April 24th, 2018, to order. Thank you all for coming. It's nice to have you all here. Are we doing recognitions first?
We are doing some recognitions, yes. So Erin is gonna introduce Shannon, who has some artwork to share with us.
Yes, I'm very pleased tonight to introduce Shannon Gagne, who is our Department Supervisor for Arts K-12. And we have the Scholastic Art Awards to share with you tonight. And it's just phenomenal. When you, I get tonight to speak a little bit about art and about music. So to start off with art, and the kinds of awards that our students are achieving are just exceptional. So Shannon's here tonight to share them with you.
Thank you so much for the introduction, and thank you so much for the time this evening. I am so excited to be here and share with you some visual examples with the teacher, the student, the grade level, and media, the awards through the PowerPoint. I'm gonna go kinda quickly through because there are so many. The thing I really wanted to point it out is just the diversity of work that has been celebrated. Everything from film, which I apologize, that first slide. This presentation is posted on our district art website, on the Simsbury Public Schools' webpage, so you could go back at a slower pace and look and watch the film. But we have film, photography, fashion, fused glass jewelry, again recycled, repurposed fashion portfolios. This is also product design, fashion design, another fashion piece.
And that's a basket weave, isn't that what that is?
That is actually a deconstructed basket that the student was commenting on, mental health and socio-emotional health, and she called it Basket Case, and she created this form. A piece student, a dress made out of teabags, gold key. This competition is so competitive. Here we have a ninth grade student who achieved a gold key, so she's competing across the state with, again, students nine through 12. And she was recognized for both her fashion work that she created in Simsbury Arts Academy. This piece is actually by the same student, and it is a soldered metal fabricated piece that is wearable. More jewelry, sculptural interpretations of the jewelry, printmaking. We have digital media. This student is phenomenal. You'll be meeting her on the 22nd for the cast recognition, but just incredible, incredible work. And again, very diverse, digital, traditional media, mixed media, mixed media. And of course, our students from Henry James, the seventh and eighth grades students were able to compete, and so we can see that they're set up for success. Stone sculpture, oil pastel. This is a sculpture piece. This student came up on stage, I was able to see him receive, or no, it was this one got the best sculpture. And he stood up on stage at University of Hartford with the image projected behind him, and it was just so moving to see the recognition. Another gold key. Again, you can see the diversity of work, media, styles, and subject matter. The students have so much opportunity for choice and voice. And that ends our presentation, but we're so proud of the teachers, of the students, their hard work. I mean, this is time, dedication, passion, and we're really, really proud, so.
I can't say enough about the work that Shannon has led in our district K-12. I happen to be over at Squadron Line today, Mr. Curtis and I were both over there, and to see the kind of work that was being done in kindergarten and first grade, and you could see how it leads to this kind of work at the middle school, at the high school. And in the three short years that Shannon has led this department, she really has done, you know, an incredible job of keeping up the pace.
Thank you. It's my passion. I feel so privileged to have this job I walk in. There's art all around. We're still supported by the community, by administration, and I just feel so privileged to have the opportunity.
Well, their students do the same thing, too. And that's really where you go full circle, where your students all know who you are and that you matter to them.
Well, thank you.
That's hugely important to all of us.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Shannon.
So Shannon, any of the jewelry for sale?
So, you know, people, we don't put prices on them, but people always make offers, and we help coach the kids when, through the process, but yeah, so.
Well, you come to play for art shows.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
Do we know when the Simsbury High Art Show is yet?
Yes, it's right after Memorial Day, 29th, 30th, and 31st. And the fashion show will be on May 21st, so all that district communication is on our website, and there's, and I'll send out added communications to update you and remind.
Make sure you tell Isabel, because she's great at getting into all of us through our presentations.
Oh, phenomenal, yeah, I definitely will.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. So the board might recall that on March 14th, the Simsbury Special Education Department, along with the Connecticut SEPTO Alliance, sponsored SEPTO Day on the Hill, and Special Ed Day on the Hill. It was a wonderful collaboration. Tonight, Joan Robichaud, who's a parent of a student at the high school, as well as Kevin Daly, are here this evening. Kevin is the president of Connecticut SEPTO. It was a day our students came and presented. There were a number of speakers from across the state that spoke in favor of, support of, advocacy of our special education services. Here in the state, it was a day of celebration, of empowerment, and it really was a privilege for Simsbury to co-sponsor this with Connecticut SEPTO. So Kevin is here this evening to present our district with an award. Certainly, that's not why we do this, but Kevin insisted that he come to the board this evening and provide us this recognition. So thank you, Kevin, and I turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Sue. And I'll stand here to minimize the number of backs that I've turned. Hello, everybody. I am the Chair of the Connecticut Special Education PTO Alliance, which is a statewide group. And as Sue mentioned, our Special Education Day at the State Capitol, it was a great success this year. It was our eighth year doing it. We hold it at the State Capitol to gently remind our legislators and policymakers about the importance of special education. That's why we do it. It was a great success, largely due to the efforts of our partners, Simsbury SEPTO and the Simsbury Public Schools, especially the hard work of Sue Lemke and also Joan Robichaud over there. You know, the two most powerful words in the English language are "thank you," and that's why we give Spirit of SEPTO Awards to people and organizations that have helped our cause. So I'm here to present a Spirit of SEPTO Award to the Simsbury Board of Education, and as it says right here at the bottom, for your support of our cause, and my sincere thanks to all of you. Who should I present this to?
That's great. Thank you very much. We too are very proud of our special education program. We appreciate it whenever anyone else realizes that, too.
Well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
It was a pleasure working with you, and I do want to recognize Senator Whitcoast and Representative Hampton, as you need sponsorship in order to present the way that we did, and just want to thank them for their support as well.
Great job.
And Mr. O'Brien is here to introduce our next round of student reps to the board, which is always exciting.
Very happy to be here to introduce our new student representatives for the 2018-2019 school year. Both of these students have really distinguished themselves academically. They've found their passion through our extracurricular programs, and they are both very active in the community. So I'll introduce each of you individually, and I'll share some wonderful facts about you. So we'll start with Katie Gault.
Stand up.
So Katie has been the recipient of the Presidential Academic Award. She's participated in the Math Olympiad. She received the bronze Soule Grand Concours. Will have to tell us more about that. She's a member of the National Honor Society, the National French Honor Society, and the Triam Music Honor Society. She loves music. She plays the viola. She's an officer in our orchestra. She's also a member of the Connecticut Youth Symphony at the Hart School of Music. She's a member of the Earth's Advocates Club and the Women's Empowerment Club as well. In the community, she's a member of the Simsbury Grange, and she's also been training to become an EMT. One of the questions on their application, when we do our interview process, asks them about an area of interest, what area might they like to do some work in when they are allied with the board? And Katie had said that she would really like to look further at student stress management, understanding that that's an area of concern. And it was pretty impressive what she had to say and her ideas. So Katie, welcome. Look forward to having you.
Thank you. Wait, just tell us what the other thing is.
Oh, yes. Tell us a bit about the bronze Soule Grand Concours.
Oh, it's just a test that you can take as a French student when you compete, I think, and then you're gonna get a little medal. I don't know if it's a thing or something.
It sounds very wonderful.
All right. It's gonna be great. And Valerie Lee. So Valerie has distinguished herself by receiving the Presidential Award. She's a Simsbury Scholar. She's received awards in technical theater, Spanish, and science, the National Academy of Future Scientists and Technologists Award, the National Youth Leadership Forum in Engineering and Technology, and the National Youth Leadership Conference Qualification. She, whereas Katie's passion is music, for Valerie, she loves architecture and engineering and technical theater. Those are her areas of expertise. She's done much work on the sets of our plays, everything from Into the Woods and Forty Second Street, and most recently, Mary Poppins, as well as being a member of our Youth Advisory Board. In the community, she's a strong advocate for the girls in engineering, so she has done a lot of outreach to the middle school to promote girls and women in engineering. And she also assisted in the design for our STEM lab, which was really wonderful. As far as Valerie's area of interest, she would like to, she's an admitted social media file, so she's an avid user of social media, but she also is aware of the perils associated with that, and she'd like to be able to help students understand how to navigate that skillfully, because she knows that that can also be something that can bring some challenges for students as well. So Valerie Lee, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for signing up to dedicate your time to us, because your input is so important, and we really appreciate you being part of our board here. Are we all set?
We are all set, yes.
Excellent. That was a lot of good stuff going on. Moving on to board, a public audience, anyone have anything they wanna share? We'll move on to Board and Ministry of Communications.
All right. Hi, everyone. Congrats on your position, and I'm happy to pass the torch. Not quite yet, though. So a lot of announcements. This past week, two wonderful authors made visits to Squadron Line. So on Tuesday, students in grades four through six enjoyed meeting George Hagan, 2018 Nutmeg Award nominee and author of the Gabriel Finley series. And then on Wednesday, kindergarten first and second graders were entertained by Helen Lester, author of Author, A True Story, Happy Birthday, Tacky, and Hoo Way for Wanney Whack.
Excellent job, excellent job. I'm very excited.
I tried, I tried. The reviews from both students and staff were outstanding. And then also this week, the Squadron School will be having its annual art show on Wednesday and Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and also Friday from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And there will be an ice cream social event at the show on Thursday night from 6:30 to 8:00, and all are welcome. Next Friday, May 4th, the 2018 edition of the Spring Spectacular Festival will take place at Latimer Lane on their primary playground from 5:00 to 7:00. And there's a cost of entry, and it's $10 per child for the first two children and $5 after that. And it's through the PTO, and they're excited to host this amazing event that includes hay rides, pony rides, bounce houses, DJs in a toucha truck. I'm not quite sure what that is. Preparing for their annual carnival and pet show this Saturday, Central School is hosting their very own Spirit Week this week, so they're having some like, kind of like the high school dress-up themes, including Fandom Day and Crazy Here Day. And then next week, S-Back Testing will begin for students in grades three through six, and juniors at Simsbury High took the SAT today. So also at Simsbury High School, the Spring Play, The Crucible, opens this weekend, so performances are going to be on Friday and Saturday evening, April 27th and 28th at 7:00, and Saturday and Sunday, April 28th and 29th at 2:00. And tickets are $10 for adults and $8 for students and seniors, and they will be sold at the door, and I'm looking forward to being in attendance. And then also on Friday, Simsbury High School students are looking forward to their Spring Fling Pep Rally, slash Pep Rally, outside on Holden Field, weather permitting. And members of the Trojan Wall have been working diligently with Ms. Pelacchia and Mr. Corbett, the club's advisors, to create some exciting events and activities to celebrate our spring sports teams and other student accomplishments. So, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Can I ask, who's doing the Crucible?
What group?
Is that the class?
No, it's, that's, that hasn't been done that way for, it used to be done that way. I've looked in the old yearbooks, but it is...
Are you calling me old? I'm the only one who called me old.
It was unfortunate, too. The previous yearbooks, but it is just the, the three major productions are the one-acts in the fall, the winter musical, and then a spring straight play.
Oh, okay.
And The Crucible makes a return. They've done it a couple other times, because it's a really popular show.
It's a great show. My book club just read The Crucible last month, so we're very excited.
Good book.
It is.
I read it last year.
It's pretty impressive. It's interesting to read when you're your age and when you're my age.
Class used to be...
Because I'm old.
Just ask Neil.
Tom.
So am I. I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer.
I am not old, and I have nothing else to add.
Thank you very much.
I'm just passing.
I just wanted to mention that the leadership team did meet last week and continued our work, had a great presentation hosted by our special guest Neil on transportation and issues around that. And we'll have a work session in May, and we'll come back to the full board in June.
Great.
Briefly, I attended the NSBA Annual Conference in San Antonio. Again, it was very well attended by 6,000 educational leaders from across the country. We had great keynote speaker sessions, workshops, phenomenal student performances. So over five days or four and a half days, it was definitely well worth it conference. I also was honored to co-present at Women in Government for educational leaders and in particular Board of Ed members, and so that turned out very, very well. Also today, I participated in a webinar with CAE. As you know, we're toward the final throes of the legislative session on May, April. On May 15th, we will be having the Legislative Recap at the Capitol about, because the session will end on the 9th, so the following week we'll be having that. All of you are invited to attend, and so some of the updates that we'll be talking about what is happening between now and the 9th. And also, I will participate with CREC on behalf of our school system in their regional planning, and we have a new area that we're gonna be discussing is the funding issues and some workforce studies. So that's all coming down in May.
Great, thank you very much. Congratulations again, Sue, for your successful Day on the Hill. That was wonderful.
It was great.
I'm glad you were participating in it.
It was great. Colleen Thompson actually got another group together, and they did another rendition of Be the Change at the end, and it truly was a packed house. We've outgrown that venue at the State Capitol, so it was, it was just really exciting, and our students did such beautiful work that day.
That's wonderful.
It was great, but thank you. The Bureau of Special Education had put out a grant opportunity for districts about a month ago to participate in some workshops around youth development and leadership development. So we applied, and we were selected to be one of the districts. So about a dozen students from the middle school and the high school with identified disabilities have gotten together with members of the Bureau of Special Education to do some leadership development workshops, focus groups, which is interesting. And the culminating event is going to be May 11th, where students from multiple districts across the state are going to come together, share their perspectives on special education, and their task for the day is to create their dream school, to support students. And that is kind of their leader, that's their final project, as it were, in this series. So we're just really excited to be able to support this work. The responses from our students are just incredible, and I'll let you know how it goes after May 11th, but certainly wanted to let you know that some of our students would be participating in the statewide opportunity. So some exciting work.
That's great. Take pictures and bring them.
Well, I'll do that.
Yeah?
Just a couple of updates on board committee work. Our Policy Committee will be meeting Thursday morning with six policies to review that should be coming to the full board in two weeks, so that's on this Thursday morning. And then we, undetermined date, but if you are part of Personnel and Negotiations, we'll have one more meeting coming up in May, and that's to do the annual Unaffiliated Group piece. So Katie will be sending out some dates, and trying to find a time that we can do that.
Great. Last night, we had our Spring Math Night, Math and Focus Night at Central School. We had a relatively small turnout, but a very enthusiastic group of parents who were very engaged and gave some really good feedback to us regarding our math program, so that was exciting. We're really building a toolbox of ways to engage parents, and I think with our math tutors at our buildings next year, they'll really be able to do this in a more direct way with their parents of their schools. So I think that has been a real positive outcome of the December Math Night and last night, so that was great. In regards to muse...
Erin, excuse me, just a question about that, it's so important. Could you, I don't wanna take a lot of time on this, but could you briefly give us a sense for the nature of the feedback that you are getting from parents about Math and Focus?
So what they're, they're, we actually, last night, they were engaged as if they were the students in the class, and so what they say is like, I get what they're doing now. I see what it is. I understand it better. So we had divided it up into like a primary opportunity to see how they're using manipulatives, so parents are really engaging in math work, just as their children are in the classroom. So doing it that way. The other piece that we offered last night as well was in the library for them to get online, because there's so many materials online that parents can use with their children, and some parents just haven't had the time to log into it or to use it. So to have that one-to-one opportunity to really get engaged, they feel like they're better understanding the program.
And is this program, this was at Central School, did you say?
We held it at Central School. It was district-wide.
But it was a system-wide?
System-wide.
So you're not going from one school to another?
No, we held our first one at Latimer Lane, and we held this one last night at Central. Next year, with the coaches within each building, they're gonna hold their own building. And as I said, we really developed a nice toolkit of various activities to engage parents, because every year their children get older, and to have them, they typically gravitate to the grade levels of where their kids are, obviously, but every year we'll have some good opportunities for them to learn more about the program.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's also better probably to have a smaller group this time, only because it means people are understanding it and they're already engaging.
Yes, yes.
So this was like the last group that we were allowing to engage in.
And two students came, two kids came with their parents, and they were very much, they were able to, yes, demonstrate it. Yep, so that was great. Just two other things. I had the opportunity last Friday to attend the Connecticut Music Educators Association In-Service Conference that they held at the Hartford Convention Center, and Simsbury had two ensembles that were chosen, and a lot of people applied for this across the state. And our saxophone ensemble, directed by Lisa Abel, and our Simsbury Singers, directed by Colleen Thompson, were both chosen to perform, and it was outstanding. I just can't say enough about the performance of these kids. Likewise, we had about 15 elementary students that were there, so after hearing the saxophone players, after going to the Simsbury Singers, and then down to the elementary, you can see, just as I said with Shannon, the way in which kids are learning music and taking what they learn at the elementary level as it moves up, it was, it was just spectacular. So I'll send this around so that you can take a look at it. I was really pleased to be able to attend that, and Andy O'Brien actually was with me at the same, at the conference. And then on top of that, we were just acknowledged as a 2018 Best Community for Music Education once again. Eighteen districts in Connecticut were one of them, out of 583 nationwide, that were identified as having the best community for music education.
Wow, that's wonderful.
So just, just one thing is on, is on the mind tonight, which is, we're one week away from our budget referendum, the end of the 18-19 development process, and Matt probably has other items related to that perhaps, but that's, just want to keep people to keep Tuesday from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
May 1st.
May 1st.
6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
But on your calendar.
Thank you very much.
I would also share tomorrow is our annual Staff Recognition Day, so we have various kind of celebrations at each of the individual schools, which culminates over at Henry James in the afternoon, where we honor employees for different milestones in their career years of service and those that have retired. So it's always a feel-good day where we slow down a little bit and acknowledge the efforts of our great staff.
What time is that event?
That starts at...
Three.
3:00. 3:30 for mingling, and then 4:00 with the program.
Very good to know. Sounds great. Moving on, we have our, I don't have any news, that was a great report, thank you all. Moving on, I would like the approval of minutes of the March 27, 2018 meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstate.
Thank you very much. Moving on to personnel.
Three personnel items tonight. The first is a resignation, but I'm also gonna turn it into a congratulations to our middle school principal, Brian White, who it was recently announced has become an Assistant Superintendent for the Stanford Public Schools. It's really a reorganization of their district leadership, and a tremendous opportunity for Brian, after six years of service at Henry James, to, you know, land a central office position, and we're quite happy for him. But we do have to move his resignation from Simsbury, so if someone there could make that motion on your sheet.
Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement...
Resignation.
Resignation, excuse me, I'm on the bottom one, of Brian White, effective June 30th, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations and good luck. We're very excited to watch and see what happens. He will still be a resident of Simsbury, so I'm sure we'll be checking in with him along the, along the way.
Great opportunity for that.
So congratulations to Brian. The next one is a retirement that came in recently. Sometimes we get these spring retirements as people have the years of service when they can make that decision, and one of my really favorite colleagues at Simsbury High School, Pam Hammersmith, who's been a PE teacher there and at Henry James for some time, 35 years of service for the Simsbury Public Schools, incredible connections with, the wonderful, wonderful thing about being a PE teacher is you see everybody in the school, and Pam had connections with everybody, and that also includes student athletes, where she was a very successful field hockey and lacrosse coach. I know earlier this year you heard about the first class into the Simsbury High Athletic Hall of Fame. She'll be nominated soon, trust me. That's, that's a Hall of Fame career that she had, and congratulations to Pam, and we need a motion for her, accepting her retirement.
Jennifer?
Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Pamela Hammersmith, effective June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for all of your heart and dedication to our school system.
Absolutely.
It's awesome.
I'd kinda like to be opposed.
You can't, Tom, you can't. It's not fair.
I don't think Pam would like you very much if you did that.
Yeah, her choice, you gotta let her go.
And then one other notice of retirement, as you know, we do have some language in our teacher's contract that gives folks an opportunity to make an advanced notice of retirement, and this is an advanced notice for sort of a year from this June, and that is Rick Collins, seventh grade English teacher on the, on the red team. I know that because my kids were on the red team and had Rick Collins, however many years ago that was. Also, a long time at Latimer Lane, as an elementary teacher before he came. Also a long time at Latimer Lane as an elementary teacher before he came to Henry James. And Rick was a coach of many sports for Simsberry from football to basketball and multiple state championships on girls' track. So you're talking at some point, another Hall of Fame athletic career here when, when that time comes. So we still get Rick for another year, so make sure you make the motion right and it's there on your exhibit.
I'll move, report that, accept retirement of Richard Collins effective June 30, 2019.
Thank you, Jennifer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much and again, thank you for your service. Wonderful continuity we have and the people that stay forever are just, it's just such a gift to the town that I don't think people really appreciate it as much, or we don't say it enough how much we appreciate it. Moving on to the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers.
So, a process that we go through each year and one that is driven by statute and that it has to happen before May 1st. These are folks who are hired for temporary positions in our case and therefore are not slated to be brought back for next year and have to go through a non-renewal process. The important thing to note is that the non-renewal, that letter that I give these folks says that isn't, it is not related to their teaching performance, that their teaching performance is, it's just the fact that in the, in the cases here are one teacher filling in on a medical leave and that person could potentially be coming back to us next year. The other two, Dana Pescatello and John Ford, are folks that when we had a move of a department supervisor and chose not to fill the department supervisor role early in the year, they came and filled the teaching portion of the department supervisor role. Now that we're seeking it, and that was the condition under which we employed them. They knew it, that it was a one-year opportunity that might turn into something else. At this point, it hasn't turned into something else. It still might and we would turn to these people if it did. So I need you to, it's unhappy motion, but I need you to make this motion for non-renewal.
Okay, I'll move that the contract of employment of the following staff members be non-renewed effective June 30, 2018 and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Favorite.
I'm on a roll, I get three exhibits in a row here. So, presented to you tonight, the calendar, this is not for next year, just to note, this is for 1920, so another year out that we are looking at the calendar. And following the advisory recommendations that came from the school calendar committee so many years ago, that the, you'll, if you turn to the actual exhibit of the calendar, I could show you a few highlights. Obviously, we start on the last Wednesday in August, as we have been for many years. In the fall, we do have both Jewish holidays falling on a weekday this year, so that you'll see on September 30th and October 9th. Those, sometimes one falls on a weekend and, but not the case this year. Of course, Columbus Day and Election Day and Thanksgiving. It is a pretty long holiday break. We looked at this, December 23rd is a Monday. We found a couple of districts that made the choice to hold a half-day on Monday, the 23rd. We decided that was not the wisest, wisest decision, but there are, there might, you might see a couple out there where people are holding a half-day on December 23rd. We're going to take the whole week and a half, that's what we're recommending. Nothing unusual in January and February. We've been taking the kind of four-day weekend around President's Day for quite a few years now. March looks like there are no days off, but in fact, when Aaron goes to make the professional development calendar, we will insert a day in March that's a professional development day, not a holiday, but a professional development day. Following the CREC calendar advice, you'll see that the spring vacation captures an extra day because Good Friday precedes the recommended week for the district, the local calendar, the regional calendar. And then you're just looking at Columbus Day after that. So, I'm sorry, thank you, Katie. Katie does, Katie does this, so. So that is, and that gets us out with no snow on June 10th, or no snow days called by the superintendent.
We're going to work on that. Continuous improvement.
That's a big graduation.
So if there are no questions or comments, you can choose to move to adopt this calendar tonight.
Anyone have any questions? Comments? Thoughts?
It's my first year without a kid in school.
This will be my graduation year.
There you go. So you're particularly interested in that no-snow policy.
That's, no snow. I don't know, it won't matter to me. Anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move.
Thank you.
There you go.
Second?
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nice job. This is not, it seems so simple and it is so complicated. So don't ever think that I won't understand how complicated it is to get this done. I'm fully aware. Moving on to end-of-year authorizations. We have a lot of, we do this every year?
Yes. Yep, there's no, there are no changes in these motions, but we kind of need to review them each, each year and try to explain if you have questions about why. The first, the first motion that we would request relates to state and federal grants, so to authorize the superintendent to renew those grants that happen over the summertime.
Okay. Tom, you want to read that mo, motion for us?
I don't have the second.
Jen?
I will move it. Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to act as the board's agent in renewing applications for state and federally funded programs.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the next category relates to transfer funds. There's three motions. The first motion relates to transfers within our major accounts at year-end and then the, the second and third motions relate to the process of the non-lapsing account that was set up several years ago and also authorizes the superintendent to act on the board's behalf.
Anyone have any questions?
Do them one at a time?
One at a time, please.
Okay. I'll move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds from those accounts in which a surplus is anticipated into those accounts in which a deficit is anticipated.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You want to do the next one too?
Sure. Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to request Board of Finance approval for the deposit of unexpended funds at the close of the fiscal year into the non-lapsing account for unexpended education funds account. As authorized by state law, the amount of said deposit will be no more than 1% of the board's current year operating budget. Unexpended funds over the 1% threshold will be returned to the town general fund balance.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sue?
Do you want to hit this one? Sure. Move that the Simsberry Board of Education authorizes the superintendent or designate with the Board of Finance approval to approve any and all expenditures from the non-lapsing account for unexpended education funds account.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then the last part is just relative to the summer hiring process and authorizing the superintendent to, to employ teachers during the months of July and August.
Any questions? Lydia?
Move that the superintendent with the approval of the board chairman be authorized to hire staff for the 2018-19 school year during the period of July and August when the board is not in session.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
That's a lot of procedure there.
It's a lot of business stuff, yeah.
All right. Neil's already transitioned us.
Excellent job.
With Jeremy.
I thought, I thought he was leaving.
So happy to have you.
So we have a presentation and update on a very important topic of safety and school security. So I'm going to give it to Neil and he's going to introduce our SRO to us and we'll move forward with the presentation.
Yeah. Last time I sat at this table, I was with Jan Sands bringing all the energy and enthusiasm of our team. Tonight, I brought the muscle. Jeremy has been our school resource officer at Simsberry High School for 60...
Third, third school year.
Third school year, so. And does a great job and is going to be part of this presentation. What I wanted to do tonight, I've given some informal updates to the board through communication about where we are with some of our efforts around school safety. The community has been talking with us, certainly a lot, about school safety in, in the wake of events in Parkland and other places. And I think certainly the, the, the amount of communication that's happened through the news and the student reactions across the country around school safety has also driven more conversation and that's certainly important. What we want to do is show you kind of where we've been long-term on, on school safety, show you some of the things we're doing this year, right now, in response. Have Jeremy talk a little bit about his role as a school resource officer, one that we've had for a long time and one that he and Todd Cushman right now are really offering a great service in partnership with us. And then answer any questions that the board has related to this really important topic. So I begin with where we have been in the last five, six years, I would say, what efforts have been made in that timeframe related to improved safety. And it starts with the entrance hardening that I would say happened right after the Newtown shooting that really drove the attention of folks, certainly here in Connecticut and well beyond. That was when the, we had had a couple of schools that had done some work with buzzer systems, that's when all of them were hardened with that system and required entry into a locked, a locked door during school business hours. And this board also knows well that we reload, the two, the two schools where surveillance was extremely difficult simply because of the, where the main office was located at Squadron Line and Henry James, you, you pushed forward capital improvement projects that helped alleviate those concerns. One, one of the most important things, when Sue was in my chair, working on the school safety stuff that she did, was work with another consultant that brought us to a, a state where we all were using the same language that, when, in, in response to our, any emergency actions. And it's called standard response protocol. It, it involves these four actions that you see here, lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter in place. And we don't have different things that we're calling that at the elementary or the middle school or the high school anymore. And it's the same actions and posters in every school and it gives us a standard language across the school system. So whether you're a kindergartner or a 12th grader, it's the same basic actions for emergency and kids transitioning from school to school know them and it was a really important step forward for us in being consistent. Certainly the addition of a second school resource officer. The high school has had a school resource officer going back 15 or 16 years, but we added a, a second officer who is based at Henry James, but also does a lot of outreach to the elementary schools and that's Todd Cushman, currently serving in that role. And what that also did is allow the high school person to be completely dedicated to the high school. The complete overhaul of the district safety plan, this was by state statute, but the, the, after, about three years after Sandy Hook, they said that everybody needs to update their safety plans and submit them. And you've probably seen this in the news, it's actually gotten a lot of play in Hartford Current on, on some of like the investigative reports. There are still districts that have never turned in a safety plan despite that legislation. So, and I'll show you why some districts haven't done it, because it's not a small effort. This is our safety plan and it took quite some time to even figure out what they were looking for. It's an incredibly comprehensive document that not only talks about basic actions, but also has very specific actions that you might need to take if there is a bus accident, a tornado, a lightning storm, anything that you can think of, a gas leak, that you have prepared what your actions are going to be. And some school systems just had a really hard time meeting that legislative requirement and you still get updates that many have not. And it's a little scary. We are in compliance and very proud of it. And then the other thing that I would say we've done quite well in partnership with Kevin Kowalski, the Towns Emergency Operations Leader, is enhanced drills, simulations and exercises. And we've been invited, Burke and I have participated in a number of town drills that they've run. We were able to do a reunification exercise. They allowed us to participate in the major event that they held when the Hartford, before the Hartford was knocked down. And they've really partnered with us in making our, beyond just the typical fire drill or lockdown drill, they're helping us think through a next layer. What are we doing currently? And you know from my updates that we've contracted with a gentleman by the name of Don Shomet, who is a nationally recognized school safety expert who visited Simsberry in December. He did full-day visits to Simsberry High School and Squadron Line. And I'm also very happy to report to the board that through some grant funding, one of the grants that Aaron administers that can be related to either school climate or school safety. It's funds that we had to expend by June 30th and we had enough to bring Don back for two more schools. So on May 30th and 31st, he will be here to do Henry James and Latimer Lane. And then our plan is to find dates over the course of next year to do the remaining three schools, so that all seven schools will get a look from this expert over the course of two years. On, I'll talk a little bit about this. We, we've planned an additional layer of PD for our school safety teams. We have a district safety committee that meets about four or five times a year, but each school has a safety team that, you know, just getting this plan, getting them oriented to the plan has been the work of the last few years. And now we wanted to bring them an extra layer of training and it's something they were asking for after the events down in Parkland. They said, can, can, can we come together and talk? So I'll tell you a little bit about what we're doing on May 3rd. Jeremy's going to talk about some training that he actually offers in responding to active shooter events. And while that's a scary thing to talk about, it's important to talk about and helping people feel prepared if the worst were to happen. And talking with staff about how to do that and how to talk appropriately with students about that. You, certainly this board is well aware that part of the capital improvement plan that moved forward had $850,000 earmarked for school safety improvements and that's a partnership with Burke that we'll show you a little bit more detail on. And a focus on mental health supports and interventions. And there's a whole other sort of safety committee that Sue leads that has completely to do with that mental health side of things. So while my committee is about the procedures and the processes and the, the, the safety protocols and working with officers and emergency first responders, there's a whole parallel committee running about mental health supports. So this is just, this is what our training is going to be. So when Don Shomet came, he gave us very specific recommendations about Simsberry High School and Squadron Line that we aren't really talking about publicly, but he gave us some general recommendations too. And this is what we'll be sharing with our school safety teams. Each of these things that you see on here, we've identified it as kind of a top 10 list that came out of his very comprehensive reports. The reports that he wrote for us ran to 50 pages, so we got a lot out of them. And these are some of the things that he is recommending. Each of these things that you'll see at our, our training on May 3rd, we'll be digesting them, taking apart, having discussion with our safety teams about them. And one of the most important ones at the top is him recommending to us that we have to let people know that absolutely everyone in the school, whether you're formally a member of the school safety team and come to the meetings, you are a member of the school safety team and you have to be encouraged to speak up when something doesn't feel right. And there's, you know, that is a message that our school safety teams have to get out. You're not bothering people if you're speaking up about something that doesn't feel right about school safety and making sure that people know that. Don uses a term about safety filters and layers, that when you come into a, a place, a school, but really any place, that there are layers. At, at airports, there are more layers, right? Because it's, you're, you're going to go by security, you're going to go through a screening line, but schools should have appropriate layers, especially at the start of a school day. Those blocked buzzers are a significant filter and layer from us. But something as simple as a badge worn during... But something as simple as a badge worn during the school day about who should be in the school and who is not is a filter of who, of, that's important to pay attention to. Increasing student supervision. Don found Sims Berry amazing. He says, you have it so good that you give students a lot of freedom. They aren't necessarily eyes on at all times. And he suggested without turning it, without changing your culture dramatically, how do you get the message to teachers how important it is to be at the threshold of the door in the morning? So that you're both seeing the students in your classroom and in the hallway and getting more people involved with more eyes on kids more of the day and, and looking at that. He's a big believer, unfortunately, not true of Parkland, but of most school violence events, they happen within the portion of school. And really what can schools do to enhance their morning arrival? Sort of have an all hands on deck mentality around your morning arrival and having as many people as you can out there greeting parents, greeting kids, seeing what's, what's happening during the school day. Ownership of the school, he thought our ownership was excellent. And he said, it can only get better in terms of that you, that's about that you have the decorations, the pride in the school that when you walk around, people care about that school. And if there are places in your school where you can't see that ownership, enhance them. Basic crisis skills would be our lockdown and lockout procedures, but literally going room by room and making sure people don't have questions was a recommendation that he had. Identifying critical spots for observation. He made this clear to us at Squadron Line. In fact, Jeff Tyndall walked by during our debrief with Don because he, he made the point of, I want you to think about this critical spot. And he stood us right inside that front door. And if you know Squadron Line, where you can look into this cafeteria, see who's coming in the front door, see who's coming in the back door and look up and down the ramp. He goes, this is a spot that is valuable and you should be putting your best people here at those critical times of day because that's just the way to be thinking about school security. An expert eye on the building, this would really be your security officers, your custodian, your head custodians who know that building well and making sure that there are regular sweeps happening. I'll talk a little bit about student threat assessment protocols, making sure that if there are students showing any signs of danger, that you have firm protocols in place of how you assess that. And Sue's committee has done a lot of work on that front. And Don's company is actually called People Are The Prize. And that's all about relationships in your school being the key to school safety. I have told some people that Don, at the end of the high school day, actually talked about one of our staff members, Mrs. Sullivan, no relation to Mr. Sullivan, Mrs. Sullivan, who's a math teacher at Sims Berry High School. He stopped a student in the hallway and was talking to that student about, what do you, do you feel safe at your school? You know, who do you go to if something happens in your school? What do you really like about your school? And that student started talking about Mrs. Sullivan and how that's, Mrs. Sullivan put all this effort into freshman year where that student was struggling in math and she stayed connected to it. And that's why she likes Sims Berry High School because of Mrs. Sullivan. So since that story got told to us at the end of Don's day, I've been getting all of his national updates to people. And I'm watching one of these 20-minute videos that Don, it was like two months later. And he starts talking, goes, recently I was in a school, let me tell you about this school, it's a really good school. And he starts telling the story of Mrs. Sullivan. And so I'm watching this video that he sent out all across the nation. And while he never named Sims Berry High School, I'm sitting there going, look at this, he's talking about us. So I sent it.
In a good way.
I sent it to Bernadette Sullivan, she cried all over again. But that's Don's message. Like you've got, if you're building those relationships, you're improving, you're not just improving your school culture, you're improving your school safety. And that's.
It's a really nice evolution, Neil, right? Of the hardening that was the focus the first time around with all those things you talked about and the dollars and the investment there with people and changing the roles of everybody. It's interesting.
So one more for me before I turn this over to Jeremy. This is what we're doing on that May 3rd day. We've scheduled this training with our school safety teams. It's going to happen next Thursday. We're bringing Squadron Line, the high school and Henry James safety teams in in the morning. The other four elementary schools are coming in in the afternoon for two, two and a half hours. The Cobb School found out about it and asked to come too, so they're joining us for the afternoon. It's going to be a much more, I just went through that list very quickly. So picture a much more detailed talking about that list from Don Shomet. Jeremy's going to talk to you about his training. We're fortunate that we have a school resource officer who can, many schools are bringing in active shooter training. And a lot of the feedback you get about that is it's very intimidating and it's very scary. And we have a trained in-house expert who can deliver that in a way that is much, much more appropriate. And then what we've asked our school safety teams to do is say, all of you are getting questions from your families, from your parents, and we've asked them to submit questions in advance so that these folks, myself, our school resource officers, our safety experts at the secondary level, Steve Patrina is administrator, has put a tremendous amount of work into safety protocols. And Scott Baker as our most seasoned elementary school principal. And then if you don't know, Rich Walsh, he is the head of our security team at the high school, a former state highway officer who is, our, leads our small security team at the high school. So we're going to take, with many of those people being high school-based, we're going to take, the high school is a step ahead on the safety procedures of all the other schools. So part of that is the high school really lending its expertise to the other six schools in town and trying to help answer their questions related to school safety. So there's Jeremy at his desk.
If we didn't know.
Can I just ask you a question before we move into the next part of this? So I'm just curious, how many people do we have on the safety team? And how do they disseminate the information to everybody?
A school safety team at an elementary school looks pretty much like this. The principal, the principal secretary, the lead secretary in the school, the school nurse, a custodian, the school psychologist, and probably one or two other veteran teachers in that department. Or often somebody who has just taken an interest in school safety. And so a team of about seven that is the school safety team. Over the last few, not every school had necessarily its own school safety team before. What we've been doing with them over the last couple of years is orienting them to this big thick book and making sure they understand what this resource is and how to access it. Now what we're doing is that training. And then they are going to be responsible with my help to deliver a PD session to their own faculty about the types of things that we're talking about. And you'll see that a little bit as we keep going here.
One thing I wanted to ask, I'm sorry Jeremy, is that you were saying that we've had this guy come, this safety company. I am assuming that the information, some of the information can go from elementary to elementary and you're already sharing the information even though he hasn't been through our schools.
Correct.
So I mean, I'm assuming we're using all of the information in all of our schools regardless of whether he's walked through them.
It's really rolling out on May 3rd. It's really, we've distilled those recommendations now. The reports just came in in February. They were a lot to digest. This is where we've gotten them to that kind of summary stage. And now we're, we're heading out to the school safety.
I think that was kind of the goal from the beginning as far as that's why we chose the high school and an elementary school. So we could take the information from the high school and give it to the middle school and the elementary ones could be dispersed out to the other elementarys.
Excellent. With the, with your May 3rd PD for the safety teams, is there time on the books for them to get it to their faculty?
I want to talk, part of what we want to do is talk to the safety teams about what's the best time. It's probably more them getting some time to plan for something major right as school starts. To get them the information, you know, certainly the high school is doing some extra PD on May 25th. But I want to talk to the school safety teams about what makes them feel comfortable about disseminating.
How to roll it forward.
Yeah. Squadron Line, some of that's already happened because they've gotten the recommendations earlier.
Neil, I wanted to ask a question as well before we move to the second phase. And that is about students. It's, this is a very important program of professional development and training and safety teams that are staffed by adults in our school system. But what I was wondering is, I was listening to the presentation, is what, what are we doing to train and educate the students themselves about safety? We're training the faculty and people, what about the students?
So it's, it's very, you're very careful because it has to be age-appropriate training, right? You're not going to talk to a high school student and a kindergartner, first grader the same way in terms, a key part of it was that standard response protocol training and making sure that kids are getting consistent language about emergency procedures over time. That's delivered very differently to high school students where they, time is made for them to watch the very same training video that adults watch in terms of standard response protocol, which talks about things like if you can't get behind a locked door and you can't hide, you have to make the best decision that you can. So it's a different layer of training. And certainly some of the things that Jeremy talks about with students when he has the opportunity and visiting classrooms have to do with that training too.
Yeah. And I've definitely talked with the high school security team about this issue of, we're giving the training to the teachers, but essentially we have more students in the high school than teachers. And a lot of our students carry themselves as adults and they can take care of themselves. So we actually discussed, you know, doing this presentation to the teachers first and then presenting it to the students maybe in a cut-down fashion. They don't need the one hour long presentation that I'm giving the teachers, but maybe a 20-minute shortened version of the basics of this is what we're expecting out of you guys if something does occur.
And where do they get that? In the classroom or in the auditorium? Or what's the venue for that?
Mostly, so obviously I don't control that side, but what I've seen in the past, what they would do is they would just call down like a senior class to the auditorium and we would do a quick presentation during a homeroom period. So this way they're not losing their education time. And it's during a homeroom period where it's, most of the students have free during a homeroom, so.
So is this organized such that we have, we have touched up 100% of the students in our district?
You would hope at least.
I mean, to some degree, what Jeremy's, the training that Jeremy's talking about is really not happened for students yet. Because it's just, we're just rolling it to the faculty. But if you, you'll see what he's going to present in a minute and then I think we can pick up that question again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First, what Jeremy's going to do is just take a couple of minutes, talk about his role that he has settled into now as a school resource officer, and then we'll talk about his training.
Yeah. So I'll talk to you guys a little bit about the school resource officer role since it's probably been a while since you guys heard about it. But, so I've been in the high school for, this is my third year now. Neil Sullivan was actually on the panel of interviewers when I was offered the position. And one thing Neil had asked me is like, what are you looking forward to being a school resource officer? And one thing I look back to is when I was in high school at Weathersfield High School, I had a good connection with the school resource officer there and a lot of kids did. And he was very positive and had positive interactions with the students. And that's the way he was able to gain a connection and trust with the student body there. And that was one thing I told Neil was when I become a school resource officer, that's what I want to do is I want to be able to be a positive influence on the students, have positive interactions with them, especially with what's going on in the world today. There's a very negative connotation on police, a lack of trust in police. And unfortunately, it's, it's due to some social media and the media. And a lot of our students, that's kind of what their life is revolved around right now is social media and the internet and whatnot. So I've done my best to try to build this connection with, with the kids. And the way I've done it was, is through getting into their classes, teaching different types of classes from their law class, civics, social studies, even gotten into their art class to talk about police photography, their forensics class. I got into their gym class to talk to them about health awareness as far as drug addiction goes. And obviously the new topic of vaporizers. Obviously we have an issue in the school with that right now. And other ways that I do it is through the cadet program that I run here in town. It's actually probably the one of the first, most successful cadet programs. We win awards every year, multiple awards. We have cadets that go to college for criminal justice and they join RLTC programs. There was actually an article about one cadet last year that joined RLTC, Miranda Livingston. And I also help coach the JV hockey team at the high school. I want students to be able to see me in a different light other than being a police officer every day in a uniform. So I've built that type of connection. If you ever see me in the high school, a lot of kids don't even call me Officer Cormier. They'll just call me Cormier, Jeremy or Coach. And I'm, and I'm okay with that. You know, so long they're okay with me being that way, that's fine with me. So, but my biggest goal, or my biggest job is being the liaison between the high school and the police department. And Todd's in the middle school and elementary school with the police department. So we've built a good relationship with the schools. You know, we work together on topics that come up, even things that I probably shouldn't be involved in as far as school consequence stuff goes, but they like to have me involved so that the students get to see me in that light as well. You know, we're always available for the schools off-duty as well. We always take phone calls to help them, guide them, make sure they make the right decision. And if stuff needs to be put in our hands, we do that as well. So that's pretty much the job as a school resource officer.
So if you, you wouldn't recognize that without a broader view? That is in Jeremy's desk is right where two of the three assistant principals offices. So it's literally part of the working office of the assistant principals. What I've asked Jeremy to do, this is the training that Jeremy has already delivered to administrators and that we are now rolling out to others.
So the training is called CRACE and civilian reaction to active shooter events. But when I presented, I don't like to use the active shooter portion in it because a threat in and of itself towards a school could be anything, not just the shooter. It could be somebody coming with a knife or just somebody that's out of control and we're trying to control the individual. So I like to approach it in that fashion. And basically we start with the presentation and talk about the psychology behind what your mind and your body goes through during a stressful event. Not everybody goes through anything like that through their whole life. Fortunately, as a police officer, I go through that a lot, working as a police officer. So we're able to deal with those stressors that happen within our body. But somebody on a normal day in a school wouldn't know how to deal with that. So we talk about the psychology, what your body's going to go through, what to expect from that and how to control your thoughts and actions. And basically what we like to touch upon is the three decision-making, decisions that you can make during any event. And obviously those are decisions are run, hide and fight. Okay? But we want the teachers to kind of make their own decision based on the situation that is in front of them. We expect that if there, say a threat comes in and it's on the backside of the school where the cafeteria is, we would expect that teachers in the front side of the school would be able to evacuate knowing that information. If they can't evacuate and there is no exit and you have no choice, but to barricade yourself behind a door, lock the door, turn the lights off, hide in the corner, that's what we expect them to do for the most part. Keep the kids safe inside that classroom. But if you do that, you have to be able to fight. Because in, in studies in the past, it shows that somebody that's going to come in and cause harm on somebody in a school, they're going to do it with any means possible. So if they make their way into that classroom where students are with their teacher, they're going to make, harm somebody. So what we expect is you obviously fight for your life at that point. And there is a study, a video that I actually just watched that shows the difference between just waiting there and hiding and fighting. And the, the amount of casualties or the amount of injuries actually decreased by 90% if you fight back. And we're not expecting somebody to knuckle up and fight somebody, but there's chairs, there's book bags, there's a fire extinguishers, books are heavy, you know, those types of things that could be thrown at somebody that is coming into a classroom. Some of the presentations that, that have happened, obviously is the administrator presentation that happened in November of 2017. We obviously, our goal was to put this out before Parkland happened. And unfortunately, Parkland happened before we were able to get it out to the other schools. But May 3rd, we're going to be doing the school safety teams like we just, just discussed. And May 25th, I'll be bringing it to the high school staff during a PD day. And what I'm going to be doing is my full one-hour CRACE presentation. And my presentations, I like to have it interactive so the teachers can ask questions as we go along. And at the end of my presentation, we're going to disperse the teachers back to their classrooms. And we're going to take the time with each teacher to discuss what they can do to make their classroom safer for them and their students. And that's going as far as laying a blue tape line down for non-visibility from a window. So if somebody just peek into the classroom, they won't be able to see students if they hide behind a blue line. And we're also going to talk about placement of desks, placement of the teacher's desk and whether or not they could see outside the school and out into the hallway. And then we'll be also bringing it to other schools in 2018, 2019. This presentation I've also given to multiple businesses in town as well as private organizations and other schools in our, in our town.
Jeremy, there'll be time and enough time to work and go into individual teachers' classrooms?
Yeah. What we're going to do is we're going to take our security team and disperse them, like we want to take a floor and hit all the teachers. I'm sure teachers have questions about their own classrooms. And I want to be able to answer that because it's, this is obviously a concerning subject and you're probably afraid in front of a, a group of teachers to ask that question, but it's a lot easier for us to answer it within your classroom.
That's excellent.
I would add too, that a lot of what this training is about, starting with the standard response protocol that Sue brought to the district and response protocol that Sue brought to the district and standardized, and this, this another layer of it, which, you know, a lot more people are talking about kind of a run, hide, fight methodology around safety concerns. The, you know, as it says up there, the fight obviously is the last resort, because what the protocols after, unfortunately, the, when, in 1999 with the Columbine massacre, the police protocols completely changed. At that point, it was surround the building and wait. And now, officers are going in. So response time on anything that is an active violent event, you're talking a matter of minutes.
Three minutes.
And, and it's, it's, response times are such that running and hiding, especially behind a locked door, is the best thing you can do. And one of the things that the consultant who brought, who came out from Colorado the last time, if you're behind a locked door in, in a school, even a school violent, you're safe. These people very rarely go behind a locked door. That's not, so the more you can just drill those basic procedures into folks, the, the better off you're gonna be. We think we're really good with the standard response protocol. What Jeremy's training is, is, is that enhancement to standard.
We also discussed, really quickly, we just discussed what my response is and other officers' responses to the school, is nobody really knows what we actually do in that scenario. They just think we show up and we try to take care of it. But we talk about how we respond, and we run through the building until the threat is gone. We don't stop to help anybody. We, we keep going through the halls, through the classrooms, until that threat is gone and neutralized, and then we come back into the school with EMTs and firefighters to do a, a walkthrough and get victims out at that point. So we do discuss that as well through that training.
With the, when you're talking about at the high school, how you can want to have the opportunity to go room by room, in my head, I'm thinking the elementary schools, all those classrooms can be set up so differently, that that would be so valuable to make sure we have that time.
Yeah, and obviously, this training, it's gonna be a little bit more subdued for the elementary level, because we're not gonna expect teachers to gather 25, seven or eight-year-olds to run out the building.
Sure.
So we'll definitely go over that, but I agree with you, that's definitely a good point.
Yeah.
So just the, the remaining part of this, certainly the capital improvement funding that we, with the May 1st budgets, hope to be spending as early as this summer. We, Burke is working with principals and head custodians, and Steve Twitchell, and just making sure that we have the most important things on our list to spend that money on. A lot of it is gonna be some upgrade to the FOB software system. It's time to upgrade that system. There are some interior lock things that we know we can do. Some of those places where we think we can spend a little bit of money to really harden the vestibule, you know that in squadron line in Henry James now, when you come in, you're sort of in a contained area before you access the school. That's not the case in all of our places, and there are some things we think we can do to make it more like that, so that you're kind of in that, that locked portion before you enter. And certainly, window hardening is something that we're looking at. There is a process that, there's film that you can put on windows that allows them to restrict entry, if anybody were to try to take a gun to it, or a sledgehammer, or that there, that it's gonna, it's gonna hold up for a period of time. It's something that other school systems have done. We've done it to some degree. We don't tell people where we've done it and where we haven't, but what this is gonna allow us to do is to get that product out there on many more of the windows in the school, and that, in the schools, and we think that's a positive thing. And then finally, the, the mental health side that Sue has been working on. First, I would say there, there's a heavy emphasis on social emotional learning at the first tier, that where we have school social workers and psychologists at the elementary level into schools, we have morning meetings talking about healthy lifestyles and, and stressors and, and how to handle them, through developmental guidance lessons at the secondary level when folks are coming into classes. But what we're really trying to do is create a culture of reporting, that if kids, if adults the same way, everyone's a member of the school safety team, if you feel that something's wrong, that you have to get to somebody. We're not creating that culture from scratch, because we know our kids will talk to us. They already did this year when they felt something was wrong. They went right to Jeremy. That's part of why a school resource officer is right in the building. But there are some other formal programs out there that we're exploring. There's one through a Connecticut organization that you've surely heard about, the Sandy Hook Promise, that we're having a meeting this summer with them to talk about what they might offer for us in terms of a, a mentality of reporting around kids that you might have some worries about. Additional mental health supports, your budgets have supported some additional mental health experts in our schools, and also that idea of better protocols for student threat assessments, better tools when you, when a student is exhibiting some troubling behaviors to ask the right questions, but also to get a team mentality to that. And not just have one school psychologist kind of working alone to figure out that particular case, but to have a team that when threat assessments happen, they're a working team that has seen multiple threat assessments, and they develop their own rapport around that. And then, obviously, if a student is identified with something that is troubling, it's building in those supports over time, probably through an IEP, but it could happen in other ways. And that we're working with community agencies, with our own psychologists, with outside counselors to be supporting that family and that student. So at the end of the day, what we hope this presentation showed you is that our commitment to safety has been longstanding, that, that is years in the making, and a rehaul of a safety plan that we think is, is really top-notch. Certainly, Parkland and other recent events raised awareness, and we've had a ton of communication. Jeremy and I did an SCTV show to try to get some word out to the community about what we're doing. Communication is important, but so is being measured about what we're doing. You know, we were already paying attention to this stuff before, and we're still paying attention to it now, and the efforts are ongoing. And then, the other thing I talk about with people, that you gotta have a balance, because school safety and school climate are mixed. And you can enhance your school safety and hurt your school climate if you're not careful. And I had a lot of people who wanted, you know, are we gonna screen people coming through the door like at the airport? And you have to have an ability to say, you know, while that would make us more safe, please remember that you have to go to the airport two hours early when you go to the airport. And that's not a reasonable way for us to operate a, a school every day, and that's not something that we're gonna do. And it's not, not the way that our community is, by and large, gonna expect kids to come into a school. And it's that, you, you don't want to change that climate. You have to be careful with what you're doing. And certainly, I think what the last couple of months have done is it helped us to engage with the parent community a lot on these issues, and, you know, different, this, as you know nationally, this is a different movement, because students are participating in this movement, and that's, and they have in Simsbury, and they're talking to the administrators, and, and, and that's true. So that's been the positive outcome of this, and while anxiety certainly has risen in the last few months, I hope that people feel that the response is appropriate. So at that point, any other, I know questions came as we went, but Jeremy and I would be happy to answer anything else that is.
Any one have any other questions?
Very thoughtful, thank you Neil.
Very complete. Jennifer?
A specific question I had from family, the, on election day, on May 1st, when we all go out to vote at Henry James, is there an officer there the whole time, is it a lot? Like, how do you?
Yeah, the police department, we, we do station an officer there. Luckily, it's Officer Cushman's already there, being at the middle school, so he'll, he'll be there hopefully manning and guarding that, those doors there, making sure that nobody else goes into.
Sure we'll get a big crowd, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you very much, that's great.
Thank you.
And it's nice to know, we know you've been doing this, but it's so much, it's so much better to hear you in person, and you know, and we appreciate your commitment to us.
Thank you for having me.
Burke, we have some more information from you, I hear.
Do, and, and happy to say it's positive.
Great.
And when I really reflect, you know, Matt talked in, in this last update about kind of how things have evolved in the security side, this, this budget year is, is amazing when you think back to, the state budget did not get resolved until well into the fall. And we were really, you know, along with, with Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen able to, to be prudent in terms of the reserves that were, that were put against this year's budget. And now, we've, we've had some unexpected positive news. So starting with the revenue areas, we always get some sort of final, final grant levels in this March timeframe. This year, we, we received both in the choice attendance grant, as well as the chef choice grant, a total of $81,639,000 of added dollars that, that we weren't expecting. So we were able to get, you know, these grants have to be formally approved by the state in terms of what categories and how you're going to spend it. So that, so that was finalized in April due to lots of efforts. Martha Hogan and Kira, Kira Sheehan from the Budget Office worked very, very hard with that grant program, so I want to, I want to thank them. And then in terms of the excess cost grant this year, the, the state gave us a preliminary estimate, and their first payment in February came in roughly $200,000 higher. Now, I, I point out that we still don't find out about the second payment and that final payment until April or May, it looks like it's gonna be May, probably. And there's been a lot of variability over, over the years in what that final payment is. So we're not totally sure, but we, we have very, very positive news on, on, on those two fronts that we did not expect. So in terms of the spending categories of these major categories, our pace of spending is, is extremely similar to last year, very steady. And on the second page of the report in the middle, where I've, you know, where I've bolded what had started as a, as a slight deficit that we were foreseeing at the end of this year due to, you know, these extra revenues, is now looking like a clear surplus and not needing to use the non-lapsing account dollars. And then that just is a good, a good benefit to the Simsbury taxpayer, because that, that goes back to, to help offset, offset the tax rate. And that is something that we had reported on as we were presenting the budget to the Board of Finance in March, that it was looking very favorable. So that's something that they took into account when, when going through the public hearing process. So there's a few areas, you know, the, the largest two budget categories, instruction and insurance and pension, extremely stable, right on target. A few areas where we, we were somewhat varied from last year's pace, and I, I really just wanted to highlight the operation of plant category is somewhat down. We've talked previously about the, the lower electricity supply rate, so that was for the second half of this fiscal year, that basically has been through, since late December. And also, we've seen, as we've transitioned more of our buses to propane, I've attached the updated utility data, and you see that, that our overall spending for diesel and propane is down, and, and that's positive news due to the efficiency of the propane vehicles. Also wanted to point out that in out-of-district tuition, that we did anticipate, based on past years, the students that we place in Creck Magnet Schools, who also have supports that we have to pay for, for special education services, those, those dollars look to be down about $30,000 compared with last year. Some of the pace of spending is just due to the timing of, of, of when we're getting our bills, but some of that is, is, is actually a decrease. So again, this is one of those years so far where everything seems to be turning out better than, than we would have hoped.
There's a question about that, just for clarification. So, I'm not sure I have the number right, but remembering that you had mentioned something like about $81,000 of unanticipated choice grants and other grants?
That's, yes, those are the two choice categories, yeah.
A possible increase in the ECS funding that we didn't anticipate, which might go away.
Excess costs.
Excess costs.
Excess costs. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to all go away, but I, but I think there's a, you know, there's a, there's gonna be net positive.
The question is, is that, is that money, is that revenue that will be recorded in the current financial year, or in, in the next financial year?
It's definitely all current, it's all current year.
Okay, so what do we do with that money?
All right, so in essence, well, in essence, what, what it does is you'll recall that when we planned, we planned the, the budget, we were gonna utilize non-lapsing funds to earmark certain areas.
Uh-huh.
Due to these surpluses, we won't need to do that. So it essentially flushes out your operating budget, allows us, as we talked about with the Board of Finance, to have between probably $280,000 and $300,000 in non-lapsing funds at the end of the year to talk to the Board of Finance about.
We can't, we can't hire another math coach, we, we can't spend.
I wouldn't do that right now.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any other questions? Before Tom gets in any more trouble? All right, that said, any public, thank you very much Burke, any public audience? So what do you think, girls?
We still need to be here, not at all.
They're still in, that's good. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, Board of Education Conference Room. Don't forget, our May 1st is the town referendum at Henry James, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we are, oh, we are going into, I'd take a motion to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter and a personnel matter.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Two.
No, actually, three.
Three, wait, what's more?
Yeah, I see you.
3:30?
So, Isabel, where?